...by title, and they require a future public hearing. This one we have, 5A, will come back for public hearing again on January 20th. I'll read it as follows. An ordinance of the City of Vero Beach, Florida amending the section 30-3 of the Code of the City of Vero Beach relating to eligibility and qualifying for election of the office of council member, providing for conflict and separability, providing for codification, providing for an effective date requested by the city attorney. And I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Kramer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This updates that section 30-3. The highlights I've spelled out in the memorandum, basically, the loyalty oath that we were requiring is no longer required under state statute. And we made some other changes to the notice of candidate, see, and affidate of candidate. The primary thing was to give some clarification that was actually brought out by a candidate the last election, that it seemed odd that you would say, "Well, I've been at this address for a year," but then list more addresses. And really, the point was, and I think we've clarified, that you only give the additional addresses if you weren't at the address listed for at least a year. And also, we took out the notary. That's not necessary. All needs to be done as an affirmation of the candidate, that it's true, and basically get it in line with state law and make it a little bit simpler and more clear.
All right. Public comment on this? Seeing none, a closed public comment. Discussion by council or a resolution as you see fit?
Essentially, this is the Charlie Wilson ordinance, and I guess you'd just call it that what it is. That's why it's been being brought up here. And certainly, I think that anybody who serves in city council should be a resident of the city and comply with the laws.
Further comment? Motion?
Are we making a motion for January 20th?
Yes. Move forward on January 20th?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Vok, please call the roll.
Mr. Old, Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Sterner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger.
Yes, it passes five, nothing. Mrs. Vok, under six, this is your matter.
All right. The first thing is for the council appointments for 2014, 2015. I've talked to a couple of council members that thought it would be nice if, with their appointments, they had alternate council members serve on them in case there's a meeting that they cannot attend. We don't have to discuss this today. I was just going to bring it up to see if that would be something that council was interested in doing.
I would just make a comment that most of us are serving on three or four committees at this time, and I'm certainly not willing to commit to be an alternate on another commission.
Okay.
If you can't make it.
Did all of them request, or a specific one request? Just all of them. But, I mean, it's not mandatory. I was just going to bring it up to see how council felt about it.
Was this the one that I brought up?
Yes.
It was.
You had mentioned it to me.
I did mention that because I thought that there were certain times when we would have some of our boards or commission meetings that we can't make, that we could appoint somebody else to come in as an alternate and to sit in that seat. Because I know we've, you know, a lot of times we have prior commitments, and it's not a bad idea that we have an alternate that we're going to appoint to sit in our place to make sure that we get a good report as to what happens.
An alternate council member or just an alternate person in general?
Well, not necessarily. An alternate person in general.
Okay.
I guess I didn't expect to see a formal...
Well, one Amelia and I could be ordinance for each other. She can be the alternate for Treasure Coast, Council of Local Governments, because she does, has been doing it for me anyway, and I could do the beach because I did it before.
Okay.
I mean, that's one for you, Tammy, if that helps anything.
Okay.
That's one I know a little bit about, maybe. That's the only suggestion I have. I don't know.
And then, Mr. Kramer, your biggest concern was with the County Economic Development Council, because sometimes that meets on the same day as our meetings.
And the reason that is, because that's the same day as the council meetings. And so, I don't, you know, I can't imagine that we're going to have other council members that are going to want to go in and sit on that and then bump right up into the council meeting, or if it even ends, council meeting ends before this starts. The EDC meeting would just be nice if there was somebody that was not on council that you could put in place there.
Because certainly at the discretion of the council member, if you want to ask somebody who's on another committee that's involved with that to, you know, to sit in for you, you obviously would not be able to vote, as any of us, being an alternate, would not be able to. But if you want to ask somebody outside, you can't attend a meeting. I don't see any problem with that.
You could designate someone by function. For instance, the chair and the vice chair of finance. I just picked finance out of the air.
Okay.
Do the organizations have any problem with having an alternate?
They do it quite often, at least the ones that I've...
Yeah. I had checked with the county on some of these boards with them, and they don't have a problem being an alternate. They actually like somebody representing, you know, the city if we can't be there. Okay, I'll work with you on that, then.
Thank you.
We have a couple openings on our city boards and commissions. On the Finance Commission, there is an alternate position open, and we have an application from Mr. Victor DiMaddia that would like to serve on that committee. He is the only application that we have received.
Motion to appoint?
How long has that been open?
That has probably been open almost a year now.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll second it. He serves at YSF, and he's a very strong city citizen and proactive person, so I personally know him and can vouch for him, if that's worth anything. So I'll second the nomination. You want a voice vote on it, or what do you want to do?
Voice vote is fine.
All in favor of Mr. DiMaddia? Aye. Aye opposed. Passes five, nothing.
Okay. With the Code Enforcement Board, we have two full positions and two alternate positions open. The applications we have on file are from Mr. A. Craig Fletcher, Captain Jeffrey McGann, and Dennis Webb.
Do we have to take them in any order? I think Mr. Fletcher is, should get preference, personally.
Mr. Fletcher's also a candidate for the P&amp;Z Board, our expressed interest in being on P&amp;Z.
He always said code was his love. I don't know. I defer to others.
Well, we've got four.
Yeah, he has put number one as his code enforcement choice and number two being P&amp;Z.
Well, I would move to have Mr. Fletcher and Mr. McGann, who also, I know from you sailing, in the full position, and Mr. Webb, who I also know who's also excellent. They're all three excellent people, as the alternate. If that would be satisfactory. I'll second that. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
And the last one is an opening on the Planning and Zoning Board. There is an alternate position open on that board right now. Mr. Kahoy serves as alternate two and would like to be moved up to alternate one. And I'll have to advertise to see if we can get some more applicants in for this board since we did just appoint the two applications that we had.
I'll move to do that.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? It passes five, nothing.
Thank you.
That brings us to your matters, Mr. City Manager.
First item, and you'd received an update on this. This is on the selection of a trial attorney for the litigation in the suit that's been filed against us. We had a meeting yesterday, as indicated, and the committee recommends John Frost. Would I would like to use the council to acknowledge that, and we would bring forward a letter of intent for the council's consideration, as well as Mr. Frost being here for discussion with the council at that point.
And what was the criteria determined or used to select Mr. Frost?
We looked at several things. One was the experience in trial and litigation, because that was the number-one area that we felt that was critical. We each had our own areas in which we sort of did the evaluation. For example, the discussion was, should we have a large firm, or should we have a smaller firm? And in the discussion, it came out, for example, the larger firm was the higher price to the firms in which we debated so, or discussed. But we have decided unanimously to go with the smaller firm. We felt like that we were getting the personal attention from that firm to do it. In the information that was sent by the Frost Firm, it talked about being a boutique type of trial entity in which the cases... We also looked at the experience, as Mr. Wright said. He contacted each one of them and their success rates and what they have been through in litigation. There was only one that really had a lot of experience in utilities, but we felt like that with Mr. Wright staying on board, the experience in utilities was given less priority than that of the trial experience.
Mr. Frost has a long history of winning cases in the state of Florida, quite frankly. And he is, he's an old pro.
Yeah, just so you know, he is a past president of the Florida Bar and on the Bar Board of Governors. He is board certified in business litigation and civil trial, civil trial since 1983 and business litigation since 1996. And there's no doubt that of the four we looked at, he would probably be one of the two that were on the list, or probably going to be pretty aggressive in defending the city.
The other would be Barry Richards, who's twice the price and in a big firm and who has a stellar reputation also. I would say, though, that I think the committee has made a wise choice. I think Mr. Frost will do us an excellent job. But I think we will see him and be able to judge that on the 20th. So is there any problem with council? Do we just need a consensus for Mr. O'Connor to bring him back and do...
Just a consensus, I'll bring it back. But feel free, as a member, to contact Mr. Frost anytime during this two-week period and make your own personal contact with him if you wish.
All right. Jim, you're still up.
I will move forward with that.
All right.
The second item is the wastewater treatment plant, solids handling. This is the BCR and known as the Clean B System. As you know, this has been discussed with the Utility Commission as well as the Finance Commission. Also, myself and Rob went down to Fort Pierce, in which we saw a demonstration. Fort Pierce is actually operating the system. I just sent you a press release that was sent to me talking about the Fort Pierce operation. And what we were asking here for is the approval to sign the agreement at $1.5 million to start, and it's going to be a design-build type of system in which they will put the system in at our plant.
Yes, Mr. Connor. What is this company's experience with design-build? I know we expanded their scope, and, I mean, now they're doing concrete work, they're doing other things that weren't in the initial scope.
Mr. Bolton is here, too. Also, I think we have the president of the company of BCR present as well.
Yes. Aaron Zahn is here also. Most of their work that they've done has been design-build type projects. In fact, Fort Pierce was a design-build. Historically, most, I would say 95% of their installations have, if not 100%, have been design-built, yes.
Once you expanded the scope, what was the increase in cost?
They will end up doing about $200,000 worth more of work than what we originally anticipated.
And just the basic equipment.
And that is the concrete work and the little shell that's over the top of it. The rest of the work would have been, they would have been acting as a subcontractor to the general contractor.
Thank you.
Rob, just real quick. In the Straits, Weakness, Opportunities, and Threats, you say this is a projected annual savings of $225,000 a year. Does that include the extra work that was added in?
Yes. In other words, if you look at our overall savings yearly, it's 225. So payoff is somewhere in the six, seven-year range.
So we're still projected to have a savings?
Correct. And then, even if we ever do something in the future with the wastewater plant, you're going to recapture 1.2 million of the work, I could easily say, of the value to be relocated somewhere else. So, you know, your stranded cost there at the site would be about $300,000.
Which is just what, moving and...
Is the concrete and the shell structure that's there that it'll be sitting in, the piping.
I'm going to go down and view it, and I think at least one of us has been there. Is that true or not true? You can visit Fort Pierce, is the point. Which, you know, this is a step forward, environmental step forward, and the public may not understand what we're talking about here, but what we're talking about is rather than haul off the solid material that comes out of the sewer plant and putting it in a landfill, of course, it has been sterilized, is removing the water and making it ultimately into mulch that's usable for other purposes, which is a lot better environmental, a lot more friendly environmental way of handling it. It's a step forward, I think. There are several of these installations around, but we certainly will be in the first wave of cities doing that. And I think that's consistent with our vision of the future, to do what we can to be as environmentally sound as possible. So personally, I'm for it. Is there anyone that has... Jim, what do you need for action here, please?
Approval to move forward in the signing of the contract.
Do you want to vote on this?
Please.
All right. Any other comment or...
One other comment. Mr. Zahn is, as we have said, present in the audience. If there are any questions, and anytime that you may have questions about the system, please do not hesitate. Rob's got his number and contact information, and he will be very happy to set up some tours if you wish to go down to Fort Pierce, unless you want to just contact Fort Pierce Utility yourself. Either way, I don't think there'll be any problem in seeing the thing in operation.
Is there any public comment? I'll entertain a motion then.
Motion to approve.
Second.
This can be a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? It passes five, nothing. Mr. O'Connor? Aaron?
I just want to thank you for your partnership, and we look forward to being a good steward of the right payers and your partner for a long time to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item is the septic tank affluent pump system. As you know, the step system, we're pretty well set to go. These are the materials that are necessary. One is the pump and another is the tank, and we have put those out for bid. They have come in on the bid. Mr. Bolton is here to explain some of the differentials of what we're doing, and our first meeting is set for January the 8th, in which we'll be meeting with some neighborhood.
Hello. We put the bid out on December 3rd and had an opening right before Christmas. Actually, it was the 23rd, I think it was. The specifications called for anybody that was going to bid on it, that they get pre-approval to make sure that we were actually comparing apples to apples. And one company sent something in. I rewrote part of the specs to allow for the propylene tank. However, they didn't fully disclose some of the conversations that we had. One is that they haven't been in business for 10 years, like we requested. They do have a lot of installations. However, their tank that they were proposing would not fit with a lot of our installations where the groundwater level is high. So after considering that, I suggest that we, you know, go with the second bidder there that was the original company that we had been talking to, where their installations will work all the time. Also, with the tank that also bid, when I went to Arenco for discussions on how their risers adapt to their, to the tank of infiltrator tank, they sent me a video that they had tried to test with them, but there was heavy leakage coming out of it. So in those cases, we would have a lot of water infiltrating into the tank that would be pumping to the wastewater plant. So for those two reasons, I suggest that we go with Roth Tank in my memo to you. The other was Arenco, who supplies the pumps and parts and panels. There was another company that sent in some information. We, I sat down and showed them where they needed to send us a different, additional information to, before we would say that they were an equivalent, and they never sent us anything back. So we only had one bid for Arenco Systems for the pumps and panels part of it. So in front of you is our recommendation, that we go with Roth Global Plastics for the tanks and for Arenco Systems, Inc., for the pumps and panels.
A background question. Looking at the gross numbers, it looked like you were buying equivalent for 350 installations or something, or what are...
It's about a half. Our intent is to get the best pricing, so we would look at a truckload pricing. In other words, since Arenco is over in Oregon, we would look at buying a tractor-trailer load of equipment, because the shipping cost is roughly $7,000 or $7,700. So I don't want to buy 10 units at $7,700, so now I'm adding $770 in shipping onto it. I want to order, say, 100 or 150, so that we get that number in the $75 to $100 per package shipping cost.
So this would do the Bethel Creek area...
We could order...
No matter how many sign-ups we...
Right. We could order 150 units that would handle the Bethel Creek area and put that into inventory and then issue it out when the residents sign up.
And we would have extra equipment for the next neighborhood, which is what?
Bethel by the Sea, Live Oak area that we call.
Mr. Bolton, I have a question.
Yes.
If we're going with one specific company, how standard is the equipment across the board? For example, if this company were to go out of business and we needed to get a part on that, I mean, are there other parts that could fit in?
There's other parts that are available. I mean, say, the pump, for instance.
Right.
Even though, I like to look at Arenco as Sears.
Okay.
In other words, they buy things, they modify things. So they're owned by engineers, by a bunch of engineers, and so they'll take a pump from Franklin Motor Company and actually tear it apart, look at it, and then suggest modifications to it, and then have Franklin build them a specific pump that then they put their name on as Arenco, and that's what they sell. So you can always go back to Franklin and buy their pump.
Okay.
You can always go buy... So it's really not a, none of these parts and pieces are proprietary enough that I couldn't find it on the market from somebody else. It's just maybe the quality won't be there that we're buying through Arenco. And that's one of the reasons this whole program works, so that we wanted to make sure that we were buying good quality stuff, so that we did not have a lot of maintenance costs involved in it. So, but yeah, there's other manufacturers out there.
I just want to make sure we have a backup.
The first meeting at Bethel Creek House is when?
Thursday night.
And we're encouraging people to come to that. Well, you might talk about that meeting just a second.
Thursday night, we will have a meeting at the Bethel Creek House for all the residents in the Bethel Creek area to talk about the program. Since we've sent out letters, I've had a lot of calls that, just like anything, anytime that government gets involved, the first thing they think is, "It's all mandatory." So let's get on the record that this is not a mandatory program. It is mandatory if you have a septic tank failure, and then you're required to connect. However, it's not mandatory that you sign up right away. The second question that I've been getting a lot of calls about is, we sent out the septic tank pump-out report, an inspection that I brought to council that's part of our ordinance now, and a lot of them think they need to do that right away. No, it's actually something that won't take effect until January of 2016 with a five-year requirement at that point, so there won't be any compliance issues until December 31st of 2020, or January 1st of 2021 will be when the compliance would start. So those are the two fears that you normally get whenever you start a program with, talking about, with residents. After that, they're very interested to hear about the sign-up-and-save or step-up-and-save program that we've implemented, and there's the availability of the homeowners to save around $3,390 with that, so, which is about a third of the cost of the entire installation. So there's people that have been suffering with septic tank sluggish failure. They're not necessarily a failure, but it's that, "Well, I'm only going to do laundry once this, you know, a day instead of five loads a day, because I know I don't want to tax the septic system that much." They will be happy to be able to start doing five loads of laundry in a day's time, so...
Just clarification. And since this came out, I think we've all been probably receiving calls from interested people wanting further detail. Once, if they do opt to go with the step system and they take that installation, with that hookup, they will be receiving a wastewater bill...
Yes.
On a monthly basis, along with their water bill.
Yes.
Averaging $20, $30.
Probably $30. You know, for somebody that's using about 5,000 gallons, you're looking in the $38 a month for the wastewater bill.
Okay. And then, the, there will remain some type of septic system to be used in a power failure.
Yes.
The maintenance of that septic field, is that still to the owner to have it pumped out, or will the city...
The septic tank, we pump out. So from a maintenance standpoint, we take over the ongoing cost. So as part of your wastewater bill, you won't have any more ongoing costs with replacing of your septic system in the future on a 20-year return, and you won't have any more pump-out costs associated with it. There's two options the resident can look at. One is if they have a fairly new septic tank itself, then they can choose just to put the little pump chamber in and not replace the tank. That'll save them money. However, they run the risk that that tank someday, whatever the replacement that tank cost would be, they would have to pay for it. Or they can go ahead and replace the tank now, and we then take over maintenance of everything. So they don't have any costs at all at that point. And what I think I'm finding is there's not much difference in price between that full replacement versus just the little tank installation. It would be on a cost, you know, on a site-by-site evaluation. So there's a lot of people that are moving towards that, especially they have someone where the tank is 45 years old, and they're like, "Well, I'm just going to replace all of it." Right. And really, in talking with some of the septic tank contractors, it's the 80s, the mid-80s, when, if the tank was put in after the mid-80s, then they're usually up to code and they're good tanks. Prior to the mid-80s, just replace everything. And so that's kind of where we're at with it, so... But yeah, I had one call that was someone that owned, just happens to own four rental houses, all in the areas where we were going into with this, and he was ready to call his lawyer and everything, and when I explained to him, because he had just spent like $8,000 on three of them, $8,000 apiece on three of these units, and he was like, you know, "You're killing me." So I explained to him, "It's not mandatory, as long as the system was good. He didn't have to have any other costs." He said, "I'm fine." Then that's, that works for me, so...
And we would encourage other residents to come to Bethel Creek on Thursday night.
Yes. Anyone that wants to up, that has a septic system in the City of Vero Beach city limits, that we will be eventually coming to your neighborhood. So if you want to show up early, we'll be glad to hear.
Is there any public comment on this? Seeing none, we'll have no public comment. I believe we need to vote on this, don't we, Jim? Because we're going to expend, what, $500,000?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. It's awarding of the contract.
All right. Someone like to make a motion to move forward?
Make a motion.
Second.
Mrs. Vok, I'll call the roll. Well, I guess we can do it by voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? It passes five, nothing. Mr. O'Connor?
We have the fourth quarter fiscal year 1314, electric utility rates efficiency. And as you can see, we're pretty much on our numbers in which we had projected. Our surplus came in at 769, and we had a target of 932. And given the fact that you can give or take 30 to 45 days in that process, that's not very bad, and I think that Cindy deserves a lot of credit for her, she and Tom, and what they did in coming out with those numbers, because that's pretty much on target of where we were hoping to be this particular time.
I'd say, yeah. I think it was a terrific job, and especially with the commodity and getting our use, I can certainly congratulate them.
All right. Is there anything further than that, Jim? Can we move to the next one?
I can move on to the fiscal year electric utility rates efficiency. And again, based on our track record and the projections that we have going in the future, we are not recommending any adjustments to the rates at this particular time. We think that we're still standing pretty good, and with our rate study in the process, we would like to wait till that consultant comes back and makes some recommendations to us.
And that process will take about four months?
Hopefully, March.
March? Okay.
And then we'll also have the optimization, and those two will tie in as they go forward.
Okay.
So there's no action required on this, because there's no recommendation for any change in rates.
All right. Move on to the next one.
The electric utility system study, this is the one we discussed earlier, in which we are recommending Power Services as the recommended consultant that we enter into negotiations. As you know, under the CCNA state regulations, they cannot, it cannot be bid on price. It has to be referred to as to the quality of services and experience of the various firms, and which that's what's been taken into consideration. What we would do is sit down with the number-one firm, try to negotiate a contract. If we can't do that, then we go to the number-two firm. If we can't do it there, go to number-three. If we can't do it there, go to number-three. You can't go back, though, once you've made that decision. And that's what we were requesting.
What's the city's estimate for the cost of this work, based on the scope of work that we provided for bid?
Cindy, do we have anything? I don't think we have any number.
The water in the sewer was, Jim?
That was pretty inclusive, not only the optimization, but that was the appraisal. That thing sort of got out of.
Yeah, there was two different work orders.
But I mean, it sort of covered the whole gamut. The answer to the question is, no, we do not have.
No, but I think we need, before we go into these contracts, at least have some idea, you know, of an overall cost or we're willing to go with it.
We will. And we'll bring, again, any negotiated contract has to come back for council approval.
All right. You're just advising us on that, is that correct?
Asking for your approval to move forward with the negotiations with those three top Power Services being the number-one.
Any public comment before we get there? No public comment. I'll make a motion that you move forward as you suggested. Is there a second?
Second.
Just under conversation here, Blacken Beach was ranked number one in the shortlist ranking and then it disappeared on the second.
They withdrew.
They withdrew.
They withdrew, okay. That solves that.
They were concerned about potential conflict of interest.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes five-nothing. Further matters for the city manager from?
Mr. Mayor, only one other item, and this came up earlier. They were asking about the fleet size of the police department. We have a total of 68 vehicles, 40 marked cars, 21 unmarked cars, and seven specialty cars. That would be the parking specialists and those type of things. So we have 68 units, or 68 types of pieces of equipment in the police department at this particular time.
Further questions for the city manager? All right, seeing none, for the city attorney, any questions for him? Seeing none, we'll move on to you, Ms. Graves, 9B1.
Yes. I have to say that I was surprised at the popularity of e-cigarettes. I just had no clue, I guess I was very ignorant in how popular they would become. And I have been talking to a lot of people who say, you know, I'm sitting at the hair salon or I'm sitting in a waiting room somewhere and people are puffing away on this. And it's not just water. So there is, there are limited studies, and the studies that have been done show that there is an increase in indoor air pollution within a two-hour timeframe if you're sitting next to someone, especially people with cardiovascular issues because of the nicotine that can get into your system, second-hand, pregnant women, children. I just think it's something that we need to, we need to get a hold of before it becomes, before we look back in hindsight and all the data comes out to say, oh, this was really harmful and we didn't do anything.
Any public comment on this? Seeing none, what the city council's pleasure.
Well, I think if we're going to vote on something, I mean, I think we probably just need to kind of give permission for the legal group to just kind of start putting something together that we can see.
Yeah, the next step is to prepare an ordinance.
We did have one that this council didn't go, we went forward with just the packaging, but not the ordinance to prohibit them. So that, that ordinance has already been drawn up. We just need to.
It's just a, really a minor amendment, but it would have to be an ordinance.
Right.
We just add back in that, that it's really just one sentence that prohibited the use wherever smoking is prohibited.
I think that's.
So the sense, the consensus of the council is that, Wayne, you would bring something forward on the 20th?
Sure, we can have you back first reading on the 20th, we should.
Is that satisfactory, Mrs. Graves?
Absolutely, absolutely. I think it's a good step for us.
All right, that brings us to comments. I only have one. I went to the Christmas Dreams, which was put on by the Recreation Department. It's one of those things that makes me so proud of this town. So much goes on here, not always necessarily sanctioned by the city or part of the city, but the city certainly encourages it. And I thought Christmas Dreams was just miraculous with all those young people. There must have been 100 or 150 of them, well-choreographed, well-presented. I was extremely, you know, proud. There were two performances at the Vera Beach High School. The one I went to the first was at least 80% sold out. It's a pretty big auditorium. And it was, the choreography was something that you'd see Riverside Theater. It was, it was absolutely wonderful. And these things are so important, whether the people live in the city or not, they further a community spirit and they show our dedication to our young people. So I just wanted to say, I thought our, in this case, our recreation people did an outstanding job. I have no further comments, but I did want to talk about that. Mr. Kramer?
Well, I also went to the Christmas Dream production and I would have to wholeheartedly agree, the recreation staff did an absolutely fantastic job. I think their change this year was very refreshing and I hope people pay attention more next year and attend. It's quite a great production. But with that, I hope everybody has a, has a good New Year and I hope everybody was safe. I'm.
Mrs. Turner, what's going on around town?
I just wanted to give an update on the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council. They were setting their priorities, legislative priorities for our region, which include the Florida Enterprise Zone, conversion of septic to central sewer systems, just the conversation we just had, sober homes and recovery residences, getting some legislation on that, restoration of the region's rivers and estuaries and water bodies, as well as resisting unfunded mandates from the state. So I'm just going to pass that on. Dodger Town, we've got all kinds of exciting things coming on. We've got our minor league baseball umpire schools returning, so we'll have a lot of visitors in from January the 7th through February. We also have the Korean Baseball Organization going to be here from January the 15th through the 9th. And opening up the Softball Factory as spring training for high school students in January 16th or 19th. So more good reasons to have visitors in our beautiful community. And then I had a question I wanted to ask Mr. Old concerning the memo on the FMPA audit results. I appreciate you forwarding that to all the council members. And, of course, I can't find the memo at this point. But you made some statement that with this operational audit, that they had uncovered some managerial problems or?
No, they haven't yet. They're, they're hoping to. I mean, that's the reason for it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. We haven't heard anything back yet and we won't for another, I guess, and shortly we'll begin to hear back from that, but it's not final yet.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Ms. Graves?
I hope everyone had a good New Year, and I just want to encourage everyone to come to the Bethel Creek meeting on Thursday at, it's 6:00 PM, Bethel Creek House, to answer questions about the Step. The more that the community knows, the better we'll do implementing it. So thank you.
Mr. Old? I have two things. One is I think the Fast Train, we've done a really good job of reacting to the environmental impact study, a very good job. And I'm wondering if now the next step is going to be very political. That is, it's going to be settled in Tallahassee or Washington or some other place. It's really going to be sort of big-time stuff. And I wonder if we've got the right legal representation. And I don't know if we have. I'm not thinking so much for the city, but either the county or a group of counties getting together and doing something that's more powerful. And I just sort of, I just sort of have a question about what it is, because we've got, we've got time to make sure that we've got somebody. And I think it's very important to fight this correctly. We've got one more, we've got one shot at doing this, and I just want to make sure that we're there. And I don't know the answer to it. I don't know whether we've got good lawyers or not. I just, that's the question I have, is that we ought to look at it and just see. So that's one issue. The other is FMEA, the group Barry Moline runs in Tallahassee, they've helped me a lot in trying to get up-to-date on the utilities and stuff. And I wonder, we used to have them, we used to be part of their organization, and I'm wondering whether we should be part of it again and what the process is and what people think about it. I think, I've talked to them a lot of times and it's been very helpful, learning about how other communities do the same sort of things we do, and they've been very helpful. And I just, I just wonder about that. So those are my two issues.
Isn't somebody giving, President of the College coming up?
Yes, Barry Moline is on the 8th, yeah.
Okay. Well, I guess if we have questions, we could, well, that's the same time as the Bethel Creek thing, I guess.
I think it's the 8th. It's the, at Indian River State College, yeah.
Okay.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some moves?
Okay, we're adjourned.